For attending, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we continue, I'd like to know if there's any other elected officials in the office, in the office, in the room, please stand and just briefly give your name and what your position is.
Lake County Commissioner, position number one.
Dan Shand, Lake County Commissioner, position two.
Tim Kessler, Lake County Commissioner, number three, obviously.
Thank you, and we do have one appointed town council member, thank you. Anyone else?
With that, I'd just like to introduce Senator Merkley. During his service as state representative and as our Oregon senator, Jeff Merkley has emphasized fighting for the success of Oregon's working families. That means fighting for good-paying jobs, strong public schools, and affordable college and healthcare. In the Senate, Jeff took on Wall Street, winning passage of key provisions known as the Volker Rule to shut down the Wall Street Casino that devastated America's working families in 2008. He led the successful fight to end predatory mortgage loans and create a consumer COP on the Beat, the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, to block the reemergence of deceptive wealth, excuse me, stripping financial practices. He has also championed many other issues important to our state, including our farmers to drive their farm trucks across state lines, designating the framework for our small businesses to raise capital through crowdfunding, and leading the effort to bring our sons and daughters home from Afghanistan. He is also the Senate leader in fixing the filibuster and restoring our broken Senate so it can take on the big issues facing America. Jeff is a native Oregonian and the son of a millwright. He was born in Myrtle Creek, Oregon, and his family moved with the timber economy to Roseburg and then to East Mountainville County. He was elected to the Oregon House of Representatives in 1998. In 2007, he became Speaker of the Oregon House and held that post until his election to the U.S. Senate. He began his involvement in policy as an intern for Oregon Senator Mark Hatfield, and in 2009, he was sworn into the same Senate seat once held by Mark Hatfield. Jeff holds an open town meeting in every Oregon county every year, so please welcome our Senator Jeff Merkley.
I thank you so much, Mayor, for kicking this off. Can everybody hear you? Okay, great. It's a pleasure to be here, and this is now the eighth town hall I've held in the county, and we continue to wrestle with many of the same issues, but some have progress here and there, other new things emerge, and so it's just helpful to keep coming back and keep hearing about the concerns that folks have. There are basically are very few centers at whole town halls. Senator Wyden set the model here in Oregon, and I followed that example, and I really can't envision how it could possibly do the job without the type of feedback that is provided through this direct kind of conversation. So, thank you for being engaged citizens and for participating. At each town hall, I like to put a spotlight on some activity within the county that is a bright point, that's contributing to the success of the community, and so today, I'd like to invite Rob Nichols to come up and join us. Rob, welcome, and this is specifically in regard to the Lakeview Partnership Committee, which was formed with the mission of building community pride, and by creating a vibrant and attractive downtown, by celebrating the history of the area, and connecting to the area's amazing natural amenities. And congratulations on the grant you received from the Reiser Foundation, the historic photo project that tried to help connect the annual fair, if you will, to the downtown, and the renovation, already have a couple buildings on Main Streets. So, you haven't existed for long, but you want to come and share a couple comments about what you're all up to, and if you're soliciting extra volunteers or donations, feel free to use them all.
Thank you very much. I along with there's not a lot of other people here, I'm a nonprofit corporation to promote the town of Lakeview, but I think when we picked our name, it's Lakeview Community, so it starts at the town, but really it's a community, it's all of South Lake County and all of Lake County, really, and the nice thing about it, it's a nonprofit, and the model that we have followed is the downtown renovation projects that are there, and so we've started, we've only been in place for about six months, and so we've already got some progress, and we're pretty excited about where we're going. There seems to be a lot of enthusiasm. Last year, maybe when you were here, we renovated our swimming pool here at the cost of several hundred thousand dollars with the help of the State of Oregon, and I feel like that same excitement is here with regard to the downtown area right now. So, that's why we formed the 501(c)(3) Corporation, and Senator, you can certainly make a donation. I'll be glad to do it, but the idea is like many rural communities, and I'm so glad that you came, is there's some, many of us are struggling, and there is a lot of economic opportunity here, and we're going to make sure that people know that and try to get things back on track. That's what we're trying to do.
Well, in recognition of this effort, many successes already in this short time, the certificate of recognition.
Oh, it's not to me, but there you go.
The Lakeview Community Partnership.
Very good.
And more substantially, for the use however it best fits your organization, by this form of the U.S. Capitol, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for recognizing us, and thanks for, and there's lots of other good people that are deserving, but thank you for us, and we're just trying to get our name out there, and thank you for coming down.
Thank you. Great photo. One, two, three. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I thought I'd share just a couple of comments about some of the substantial issues that are being discussed, as you think about things you would like to raise, and then we're going to have, the mayor has agreed to pull the tickets. Mayor has now seen where.
Oh, you have.
There you are, there you are. And you already have the, we have the tickets in your hands? Okay, we will also make a couple comments. We'll have a student who's agreed to ask the first question and kick off the conversation. I want to mention that we just passed the Every Child Succeeds Act. Since before I ran for office, communities in Oregon have been saying, really, no child left behind is not working. It's overly oppressive on the states, doesn't involve enough flexibility, actually leaves a lot of children behind because it forces teachers to focus on children who are just below the testing bar to get them over, so less attention to those who might have further to go, or those who have already beat the test. Lots of requirements that require school districts to spend money in the wrong places, testing that took up too much time, a whole list of things. The bill that has just passed, I think addresses most of those issues, gives a lot more flexibility back to the states on policy. An educator was telling me at a previous town hall yesterday that now we have to figure out how Oregon wants to do testing because it's not mandated naturally. I'm like, well, that's the other side of it, right? You have more flexibility, and so Oregon will have to go through some adjustments figuring that out. Second, we have a long-term transportation bill that just passed. Should I be using this microphone? Raise your hands if I start speaking too softly. The, we have gone through more than a dozen short-term extensions, so finally, we have a multi-year transportation bill dedicated to infrastructure, bridges, roads, jetties, and so forth. It's not, it's a bill that has plenty of things that, in terms of the way it's funded, that I don't like, but in the big picture, it's so important for democracy to have a long-term commitment to the infrastructure. Our parents' generation had that commitment, we certainly have the national highway system since Eisenhower, and the fact that there hasn't been long-term reliability of a federal partner has hurt projects here in Oregon, so I think that that's a move forward. I wanted to mention on fire funding, we've been pursuing a model that would look a lot more like FEMA, so the national government would operate more the way they operate in regards to earthquakes and hurricanes. We didn't get to that model, but we did get halfway there. We got a partnership across the aisle, and proceeded to get funding that is equal to 100% of the average from the last 10 years for fighting fires. The whole goal is to end fire borrowing. We also got a reserve fund of $600 million that will be on a kind of a revolving basis, so that if we go over that average, hopefully, we won it up in a fire borrowing situation. Really terrible fire year, could still happen, but we're about halfway to the FEMA structure that doesn't have a cap on it in regards to response to earthquakes or hurricanes. There's a lot more issues I could mention, but rather than doing that, let's go ahead and get into the conversation. Is somebody speaking that you just passionately disagree with? Please still give that person the respect and an opportunity to make their case, and then when it's your turn, we'll ask everyone to be equally respectful so you can make your points. Our student, Ezekiah, Ezekiah is, great, in fact, Ezekiah, is it Havan or Havan?
Ezekiah.
Havan. Ezekiah is at Lakeview as a senior, and you're thinking, I believe, about going to Oregon State University next year?
Yes, that's right.
And perhaps political science?
Yeah, probably, but we're constitutional law, I'm not.
No, we're constitutional?
Constitutional law, I'm not.
Constitutional, I had no idea what I was going to do when I went to college, so you have at least the starting point to think about how to, I remember sitting down, of course, it was before things were online, and there was on the, in the dorm room was a itch-thick book of courses, and I just sat there going, paging through going, what am I, what class am I going to take? It was, anyway, I'm glad you're on course there, and Ezekiah, do you have a question or comment you want to share with us?
Yeah, I was wondering.
Why don't you go ahead and stand up and give it to me.
Would you consider the recent takeover of the Mount Here National Wildlife Refuge an act of domestic terrorism or a radical expression of police rights?
I'll tell you, I think the comment made by Sheriff Ward there kind of summarized how I feel about it. He said, if you say you came here to support the community, then the best way to support the community is to go home. And I've heard a number of public officials kind of echo that theme. As to the sentence that exists for the Hammond's, that's a very unfortunate situation, where they were sentenced, they served time, they were out, and then, under a mandatory sentencing law, the court said, no, it's a mandatory sentencing law, you have to serve a mandatory sentence. I think what this should make us all very aware of is what happens with the, because there's been, you know, there's been a big push over the last decade and a half for mandatory sentencing, it takes a judgment out of the judicial process. I went back and looked at the law, and it says, any destruction of federal property. I said to my team, does this mean that if you destroy a chair on federal property, the mandatory sentence is five years? Yes. So, I think that that actually must be looked at by Congress, and we need to think very carefully at the state level and federal level when we do mandatories, because the reason you have a judge is to be able to evaluate the circumstances, can't do that. The court has reinforced that on appeal, said, nope, sorry, if the law says it's mandatory, it's mandatory, your judge, you don't get to reduce the sentence. So, I think we should all take a look at that very, very carefully. All right, thank you very much. Okay, Mayor.
Just the last three numbers. Number 624. That's the last three numbers. And last three numbers on your red card.
Just go ahead and read several, and we don't have to go in the exact order, and maybe if you could share, A, what number you have, she can retire it, and second, your name and what part of the county it might come from.
622. First number was 624? 620, I think I need to miss it. We have 620, okay. Do you want to ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, Senator.
I'm Jennifer Turner, and we work for Central Oregon Department of Government Council, and we administer your Workforce Investment Act funds, and we're in the middle of Turner School, so a bunch of our students are joining me today. So, we mostly came just to see you and be a part of the process, but I would love to hear anything that you see. We know that we're sector-based now in our workforce investment fund monies, and, you know, our sectors here involve mining, and lumber, and agriculture, and just any thoughts that you had about what you see coming down the pike, or anything that Lake County could benefit from or watch out for.
Well, one of the things that I pushed for in the Every Child Succeeds Act was flexible funding for STEM and for career technical education. And the STEM is in science, technology, and engineering, mathematics, there's a lot of professions now that require that type of background, and there's robotics activities that are very enriching. I was very struck, and is there a robotics team here?
Our teacher, is Fred Smith here? I'm sorry, I thought he was here. No, but we do have a teacher at Lakeview High School, very involved in the STEM program.
That is great. I wish there had been in the high school, my children just graduated from high school, but unfortunately, they didn't have a STEM program. The CTE side, career technical education, is to translate, that's the current term of art for shop classes, which were really wiped out by No Child Left Behind, No Child Left Behind, We're Left Left Behind, so we're trying to reiterate those. Those can be customized to what a high school feels is, and a middle school feel are relevant to its particular area, and so that's probably the main development that complements the Workforce Investment Act. Thank you.
616.
You have a large shot.
596.
So, I have a question about this new gas station thing they're talking about, they're talking about making it so you can self-pump. Do you think that'll affect Oregon jobs for working at gas stations?
So, unfortunately, we don't have a state legislator here, and this was a change in state law. So, I don't know the details of that law well, but essentially, it created a different structure for rural areas, so where you have, in urban areas, you might have 24-hour stations, you may not have that in rural areas, the idea is people should always be able to access gasoline. I think it had particular hours on it, I'm seeing a shape in that from, what is it, 9:00 AM to 6:00 AM or something?
6:00 PM.
6:00 AM. I was working a job once, and I, so I drove a flatbed truck down with a transmission for a dam project, and spent the night as a mechanic's assistant putting it in, got back to the I-5 down the southern end at about 4:00 in the morning, and I had to sit there for several hours and wait for the gas station to open, and it sits in my mind thinking about what the state legislature was doing. I don't know if that will have an impact on rural jobs, since it's just the hours that a lot of stations were often closed anyway, I doubt that it would have a significant impact, but again, because that was the state legislature, and I wasn't involved wrecking the conversations, I don't have more insight. Does anybody want to add anything on that? Let's just do this, how many people like the new gas flexibility law that the state legislature passed? How many folks don't like that? Normally, when I was a state legislator, we looked at this several times in terms of just the statewide policy, and what I really heard from were seniors who didn't want to get out of their cars, and either they had difficulty walking, or didn't want to deal with gasoline, and so this is a little bit, this is a compromise trying to be crafted for different parts of the state.
I'd like to add, you asked if you wanted anything to add, just this morning, you know, motorist services up 120 miles north of Christmas Valley, we don't get air, we don't get water, and I'd like to see something amended to your legis, to this legislation, that would say if you're providing motorist fuels, you need to provide motorist services, i.e. water and air for tires. 50 cents, whatever it is, the hardware store is what provides the air, and it's crazy.
Remember, 30 years ago, there could be a hose in every island that you could fill up with while you were getting your gas, yeah, yeah, that's a frustration throughout the state. I did just, so last week, Mary and I were filling up our tires, and the place we normally go, the machine was broken, and so we went through a bunch of stations that didn't have it, and we finally found one that did, and actually operated on a credit card, and I was so thankful, because I could do it without quarters, which I didn't, yeah, the station was closed, so maybe more of those will start materializing.
Ah, yeah, I'd love to see that. That would be me. Thanks for coming, and if anyone that was here when Ron Wyden came, this is quite a different turnout, you know, a lot more people here, I'm not sure if summertime on Saturday is better, or snowing in the winter, I'm not sure what the difference is in this professional hour, but he had stated he'd done over 700 town halls, and I hope you continue that tradition.
Yeah, he's about 500 ahead of me, so I will.
Right, no, I, yeah, I realize, I'm a junior senator, but.
This is my 256th town hall, so I'm working on it.
56. I guess I'm gonna, because of the number of people here and questions, I'm gonna cut it down, I've been taking notes.
Pick your top question, so we give everyone else a chance.
If I can go two-part, because they kind of tie it together, you've already talked about infrastructure projects, and the mayor introduced you as a, you know, the consumer on the beat, I mean, the reform, for finance reform, you were on the beat with your legislation. I want to know your standing of legislation regarding Glass-Steagall, because Senator Wyden, being the senior senator, did not have a position, I'm quite surprised about that, Hillary Clinton clammed out and said, no, Dodd-Frank. Second part is, what's your position on this TPP now that the text has been released? And do you really think that Ron has, or Senator Wyden has worked out the details to a point where the people are actually not getting the short end of the stick?
So, yeah, I'll share my comments specifically about TPP and also about Glass-Steagall. So, the thing that I undertook when I was first elected was taking on the Wall Street Casino, which is derivative sold by the big banks. This is known as the Volcker Rule, which is unfortunate in that it sounds like a fancy accounting term, but it essentially says to banks that they can't use deposits from all of us to gamble on high-risk derivatives. And so, that bill, people said there's no chance of getting this passed, and I thought, how strange is it that a new senator from Oregon is taking on Wall Street? It's not like I have a background in high finance, but my team came to me and laid out the, why this was such a key part of the meltdown in 2008, and having these big banks just gamble in this fashion is just, they should be taking our deposits and making loans, instead of shipping the funds overseas and doing all kinds of different high-risk ventures.
Agreed.
So, we shut that down, they had the, that was successful. Yeah, I'd like to tell you longer stories about, they had many chapters, and it was dead a dozen times, but it kept resurrecting it, and we finally won in the end. That is essentially the heart of the goal of Glass-Steagall. Now, Glass-Steagall had crisper boundaries, and I am still looking at the possibility of backing Glass-Steagall. Let me give you an example. Under the Volcker Rule, which shuts down the investments in derivatives, it still allows the big banks to do market-making, and it still allows them to do investment fund management.
And if I would, may I, on market-making, we also on C-SPAN testimony from Goldman Sachs, these guys were 33, 35, 38, and they were referred to by the gray-haired Silver Hill Men as the experts in market-making and derivative swaps.
Yeah, so if you think of market-making, that's, think of bread, you have a bread factory, and maybe a warehouse full of bread, and then you have a retail store. So, the Volcker Rule shut down the investment in the warehouse, but allowed them to still put loaves of bread on to match up a derivative with a specific customer, so that's the market making. So, but the problem, the reason that it is not a clean line is drawing the line between retail, single loaves of bread, and warehouses is not as easy as you might think, so that's the challenge for regulators. So, that's why I'm still looking at the Volcker Rule and, excuse me, the Glass-Steagall, and considering sponsoring it, it has much more crisp boundaries in terms of the regulations that it applies between investment banking and commercial banking.
And if I may close comment for educational purposes, that it had been in place since 1933, it was kind of shot down with Reaganomics, but totally killed under Clinton, and nine years later, everything collapsed. It was successful for 50 years, hope folks look at it for yourselves and decide for yourselves what it is, and we can comment with the Senator's office.
The second TPP, let me share my thought on that kind of specific partnership. How many folks have heard of the TPP? How many folks are largely supportive of it being implemented? How many folks are very concerned about its implementation? That's pretty much the ratio that I've had in my town halls. It varies from area to area. It is, I think it's probably likely that there will be some non-tariff barriers that other nations have put on our agricultural exports that will get struck down, that will help some of our agricultural sector, but my big concern about the TPP is it puts our manufacturing in direct competition with manufacturing in nations where the workers are paid less than a dollar an hour. It brings in two new, very poor nations, Vietnam and Malaysia. Vietnam pays, their minimum wage varies by county, if you will, they put one of their counties, but it's generally 60 to 70 cents an hour. Malaysia, very low wages, and is a major trafficker in human labor, so we kind of have almost equivalent of slave labor, very, very low human rights rating, the State Department actually increased or improved their rating on the basis of promises that they're making to improve it, so that they could participate in TPP. If you have a situation where you have a country with low environmental laws and very low wages, then you're going to have manufacturers go to that nation and make stuff that's just a lot cheaper. They want to be able, the international, multinationals want to be able to sell at the world price, and make their stuff at the lowest-cost place in the world, and that's what the TPP facilitates. What it means is a sucking of jobs, manufacturing jobs out of economy. It means a crushing impact on the middle class here in America. So, those were, I have many concerns that didn't address the manipulation of currency markets, which is the way that basically China has put a tariff on our products and a subsidy on theirs. Now, China's not party to this, but they could be, because they could dock with it in the future without any future review by Congress. So, I believe that some of our earlier trade agreements have had a decimating impact on the middle class in America. If you want a big picture, the three decades after World War II, middle class surged in America, and essentially during that period, we were largely looking at expanding trade with nations that looked a lot like ours in terms of environmental and labor laws. And then we had a growth in massive imports, Japan first, and then China, and then you see from the mid-'70s, when I came out of high school till now, we've had four decades of flat to declining middle class. And so, yeah, you can gather from that all the opposing implementation of TPP. Did you get a ticket?
No.
Yes. I'll get it right here.
Senator Gerald Stewart, Lake County native, what can you do to help us with the Red Rock biofuel plant that is proposed, that would help us create jobs, and also help us with our forest health?
So, just to back up a little bit, since I was elected, I've been working with the EPA to get them to change how they view biomass, because they do it just as a point of burning, other than the life cycle impacts on carbon, so try to kind of embrace the near-carbon neutrality of a lot of biomass operations. That's particularly true when you're talking about the byproducts of forest thinning, forest health, stuff that we're otherwise putting in heaps in the forest and burning. And so, the key question is whether the And so, uh, the, the key question is whether the biomass collected can qualify and operated, can qualify for tax credits related to biomass. So that's, that's the point I'm really focusing on, which would have a big help to this project.
Thank you.
Five, nine, nine. Six, one, five. Six, one, nine.
I asked this person, is there any chance that there will be any legislation on campaign-like financing reform?
Uh, could you hear a question? Any, any possibility of legislation on campaign financing reform? Very little. You want me to expand on? So here's, here's the situation we have. Uh, we have, uh, massive investment campaigns by third-party special interests. And they don't put the money into the campaign directly. They often run a third-party campaign. It's all negative attack ads. It's very, very vicious, uh, stuff. Uh, and it normally is way off track in terms of accuracy. Uh, so that's what we have to contend with. The airwaves, the television commercials get inundated with these third-party ads. Uh, we had here in Oregon, when I was running last year, the Koch Weathers came and on the web and on television in some of the markets around the state. Uh, they invested many millions of dollars in, uh, pretty brutal, uh, attack ads. Uh, the, um, I wasn't able to respond because I could not afford in the month of August, in July and August, uh, to spend any money on, on rebutting what they're doing. And I, if, uh, somebody will remember, uh, Muhammad Ali developed this strategy that he called rope-a-dope. And he'd go around or two and, and he's, the guy who's boxing would just be slugging him, just like, and he'd be going, he'd be leaning back on the ropes, kind of defending himself, just out of, out of reach of space, but he'd take a lot of body blows. And he just chose not to respond. Well, I, I would have responded if I had the resources, but I didn't. So I, I felt I just had to take those blows, week after week after week, until after Labor Day, when I was able to go on the air. And when I went on, on the air, I directly attacked the folks who were funding this campaign to educate Oregonians about where that money was coming from, who they were, why they'd come to Oregon. And a month later, they left the state. Uh, now that's one of very few states where a candidate took them on directly. And it's only one or two states where they withdrew before the November election. And, uh, if the challenge is, it takes away from everything else to try to educate people about this money is coming from, what their interests are and so forth. So, uh, I'm very concerned about the third-party expenditures. This has really opened up a Citizens United legislation. Basically, the judge has said, there's a five-four decision that said, unlimited spending on campaigns is, there's not a corrosive, corrupting force on American elections. Well, yes, it is, as we, as corrosive and corrupting force. Uh, the, um, then very interestingly, they had a case involving judicial elections. And they said, oh, well, judges, you can have a law that says judges cannot collect campaign donations, even though they have to spend themselves and take responsibility for it. Because that money would be a corrosive and corrupting influence on judicial elections. And so they understood the impact of money in judicial elections, but, but not these third-party expenditures in legislating, uh, elections. Uh, so, um, I'm hoping, it was an interesting follow-up case where Montana said, hey, uh, take our case. Because here in Montana, a hundred years ago, we were owned by King Copper, who basically controlled every election in the state. And then our legislature, to free ourselves from that grip, outlawed, uh, the campaign donations and they weakened our democracy. We, so if you want to see corrosion and corruption, look to the history of Montana. And, um, the Supreme Court, um, the five, five-vote majority said they would not take the case. So they did not look at Montana's experience. I'm hoping we continue to depress with this. Meanwhile, uh, I think the SEC, the Securities Exchange Commission, that regulates, uh, public companies, or, or the owners of the company should be able to know how that company is paying money on political activities, on donations, uh, campaign ads, on lobbying. Uh, and I think that's a relevant thing for anyone who chooses to invest in a corporation is to be able to have that, that knowledge. That's something they could do tomorrow. Uh, the chair has not wanted to do it. Uh, I had lobbied them to put it on the rulemaking agenda, they put it on, but then they got pushed by the same special interests that do those third-party campaigns. They took it off. They recently mentioned that they might consider putting it back on. And in this massive bill, uh, that was, uh, just passed by Congress, is two thousand-page bill, a bill I did not vote for. It has a provision in it, uh, which now bans the SEC from, from making such a rule. So even, even public disclosure is, 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 so, uh, it's, uh, that's where we stand.
Five, eight, six. Five, eight, seven. Six, zero, three.
That's me. Bob Carlin from Haisley. Uh, Gerald just asked you a question about what you can do to help Red Rock and stuff. I wonder what you can do to help the companies that are already here struggling to survive. We just went through a two-month shutdown of the sawmill. I think, uh, they need as much attention as anything else, and I'm just wondering what you can do.
Yes. Uh, the, and I think we have the Collins folks here, uh, the, um, we have, we have a history going back five decades now, just mill after mill shutting down. As, as part of it mechanization, a lot of it, the change in the public force. And the other thing is, is we are producing an enormous amount of timber that we do not go to, doesn't go to our sawmills, it goes overseas, goes to China. There was, uh, at the time that I was growing up, there was a provision, uh, that said, if you ship your logs overseas, you can't access public logs. That was a pretty powerful incentive for folks to process their logs in Oregon mills. But that was when companies were more vertically integrated. And a lot of companies are now just own forest land. They own mills. Uh, so they're selling it just at the highest bidder and that happens to be China at this point. I don't know if you've seen the log decks over on the coast on the Columbia River. I've never seen log decks like that in my, my, my life. So how do we get those logs processed in our mills, making it affordable? And, um, uh, the Collins representatives were, were talking about, uh, early at the meeting I held before about a, a provision that I'm going to be taking a look at. That helps make the logs affordable, that are harvested in the local area to, uh, local mills, so that may be, uh, one possibility. But another is, is there any way to create federal or state incentives? So that we're not a third-world country shipping our logs overseas, that we're processing them here in our, our mills in the, in the state. And that put a lot more people to, to work and allow us to add the value, uh, to have a more value out of our, our timber products. I think it has to be a carrot, it has to be a financial incentive. And, uh, how we, you know, we do that, I don't know the answer, but I'm asking the question of, of experts. Is there any way for us to, uh, see a lot more of those older logs processed here? And feel free to come to me with other ideas and thoughts. I'm not on the Energy and Natural Resources Committee, which is the lead on, if you will, forest policy. Uh, Senator Wyden is, uh, but I'm very much engaged in the conversation, so. Happy to hear your thoughts and details. And I should introduce Amy on my team. Uh, Amy Amri, uh, she has cards, uh, she's on the website, uh, she's my field rep. And she can put you in contact with any of my team members or she can get me on the call.
Five, nine, seven. Five, eight, two.
Senator, my name is, uh, Rick Stiefak. I'm a double-digit district representative for my students here.
Thank you for bringing your students.
We talked about this in, in class, and I'm going to reiterate a statement, uh, I made that we were talking about ISIS. I never served in the military, so it's always hard for me to say we should send groups, uh, send troops in to fight. This is a fluid situation with a presidential campaign going on. Uh, but my two questions are, one, how do we go about fighting a group like ISIS? And two, how do we prevent a power vacuum situation like they had in Afghanistan in the eighties? And Iraq in the nineties that lead to Al Qaeda and ISIS now?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so, uh, I'm going to create a pretend map in the air here, uh, to just kind of frame the conversation. Uh, here you have Saudi Arabia. Uh, they are a Sunni Islam nation. Uh, over here on the, yeah, eastern end of the Middle East, you have Iran. Uh, it is not an Arab nation, it's a Persian nation, then it's Shiite Islam. And, uh, now for, I think fourteen hundred years it is, the Shiites and the Sunnis have been fighting each other. They have a fundamentally incompatible vision of how Islam should be practiced, uh, on our, on our, on our planet. Uh, and it's reinforced also by these ethnic divisions. So you have these two major powers, and the Middle East is full of Shiite and, and Sunni enclaves that are battling each other. So you have now these proxy wars, if you will. And those wars are going to be much more intense in a situation where there's the vacuum that you described. The United States created that vacuum in Iraq by, by taking out the dictator. And, uh, the, um, we helped set up a parliamentary system there that has been completely unsuccessful. I think about how paralyzed the US Senate is after thirty years of practice. And I think, how did we ever think that this was going to, to work? And it hasn't. Uh, you also have Iraq divided by the Kurdish, the Kurds, the Shiites and the Sunnis. Now, okay, that's the framework. Saudi Arabia, Sunni, you know, Iran, Shiite, both powerful nations, lots of proxy wars. Proxy war in Syria, which is another power vacuum from the civil war. Proxy war in Yemen, uh, which is, uh, facing substantial clashes. So how does ISIS fit into that? So the folks who became the monarchy in Saudi Arabia, uh, they had a philosophy of absolute purity regarding a certain code. And anyone who disagreed with them, they killed. And, uh, they became eventually those who ruled Saudi Arabia. ISIS philosophy is also Sunni. And they, they basically carried the same philosophy that took the Saudis into power long ago, but they are at a different stage. They're not, they're not the rulers, yet they're the insurgents. And they want to set up a kingdom, just like those did who ruled Saudi Arabia. So you have a, a Sunni force. Now, this Sunni force, it's theological. You can win a battle, but you aren't going to stamp out the ideology behind it. This is deeply rooted hundreds and hundreds of years, fourteen hundred years, uh, here. So that kind of sets the context for a very complicated, messy situation. What's different now? Well, one, you have these two vacuums in, in Iraq, in Syria. Second of all, you have modern weapons. So it's very different when people have the type of weapons that they have access to, to, to now. Uh, they can do a lot more destruction. We should be very, very careful about putting troops on the ground, at very, uh, and I'll tell you why. What ISIS wants is for us to put troops on the ground. They want to frame their battle as one, one for their vision of the Sunni theology, but second of all, as a war with America. They want to have people from outside the Arab world, outside the Muslim world, coming and be on the ground. That's their best motivator, their best recruitment tool. So they, we should not fall into the trap of facilitating their, their strategy. This is why I criticized, uh, uh, Trump for basically saying, framing what were involved as a war against Islam. That's exactly what ISIS desires. The, um, the ways to take this on, uh, one is you cut off their financing. So we've got to shut down, they are using oil trucks and they're, they're, they're exporting oil. We've got to shut that down. And we've started to do so. Second is, you have to, to cut off their, their lines of supply. There are stretches where cities are isolated, long lines of supply. We've done a fair amount of that. That's a piece that we can do with air power. But troops on the ground should come from the other Islamic nations that have an interest in ending the, the instability here. And Saudi Arabia is a major force that has an interest in this because this brush fire, if you will, of ISIS, I don't mean to diminish it, but in terms of the power of Saudi Arabia, they're like, well, that's over there. Saudi Arabia has actually been facilitating that brush fire by providing funding. Uh, a lot of funding goes out of Saudi Arabia to Al Qaeda, a lot of funding goes out towards ISIS. Because they've been, kind of been involved in a compromise where they say, don't mess with us at home, we'll help you over there. Well, so we've got to, to be much, much stronger with Saudi Arabia in terms of cutting out financing. Uh, so on the oil financing, on the supply financing, uh, it needs to be Arab troops on the ground. Uh, and, uh, those are the, and then the Kurds. The Kurds are the single most effective force. It's been difficult to get support to them because we've tried to do it through the Baghdad government. Baghdad government doesn't want, um, armaments to go to the Kurds because the Kurds are autonomous. And they feel it disrupts their national identity and Shiite control. Uh, but really, they, we have to find a way to get, to reinforce their ability. Because they are the ones that, they are, they are the determined, capable, professional fighting force that has been knocking ISIS back. The actual area they occupy has shrunk considerably over the last year. So it's, it's, we're not involved, a, a year later, the kind of the, the tide has been stemmed. But the theology will keep erupting in various places and it shouldn't, every time it erupts, shouldn't be, we send troops on the, on, on the ground. This is, again, fourteen hundred-year-old battles between two conflicting theologies. And they would like nothing better than to have American troops there, and I, and that's not in our interest.
That's a tough situation when Saudi Arabia is one of our key allies in, in the Middle East, uh, five countries.
You can understand why we've been reluctant to pressure them in this regard.
Thank you.
But we at least need to be pressuring them in, in back channels, if not embarrassing them publicly about it.
We have time for one more question, I'll keep you told, so six, two, three.
And then after that question, we'll have a question from a, a student to close out our, our gathering.
Five, eight, four. Five, eight, three.
Apparently, the two-party system was founded way back then. But partisan primary elections are illegal. It, uh, deprives half of the voters. Either way, in essence, it, it deprecates all voters of their right to vote for any candidate that's, that's running for an office. How can it be illegal to not be able to vote across party lines in the primary? But then you can vote across party lines in the general election?
Could you all hear the question? Okay. Uh, so, um, I'm not a lawyer. Uh, I, I think I, I think I have the, the, more or less the framework of, of response for you. Uh, but I may have to consult and get back in contact with you, so I'll have Amy get your information. But, uh, first of all, I disagree with your initial premise that, that primary elections are illegal. Uh, the, essentially, it's a freedom of association. And if you think originally, the founders did not want parties to develop, they said this, this would be counterproductive. But then you have, like, let's say we're all the kind of initial folks gathered together, there are twenty-six senators in the, in the initial senate. And I say, well, I've got ten people over here who kind of agree with what we should do regarding setting up the National Treasury. Well, there's Alexander Hamilton or so on and so forth. And so they get together with that group and say, how can we make this happen? And they're like, well, we share, we share, uh, we share a viewpoint. Uh, we should work together to, to nominate somebody to run for the presidency. Well, you can see, it's a natural freedom of association evolution, the creation of parties. And they're like, well, let's, let's meet at the such-and-such hall and let's hold an election among ourselves about who we'll put up for a nominee. So it's, uh, it's kind of a natural instinct, uh, to form alliances with people of, of like mind. And, um, nothing stops anyone else from running outside that alliance, uh, which is the general election. Uh, so that's the, kind of the, the history of the evolution of the, the parties. Party structure has changed over time. We, the Whigs collapsed, uh, the Republicans emerged, or so on and so forth. It's, uh, and over time, there are sometimes the, the, the two parties have kind of rotated. You get enough decades apart, a party that had a strong position here ends up over here. Five decades later, other parties in the other spot. So, um, they continually evolve to the issues, uh, facing, uh, America. And, uh, so that's, that's the basic background to it. I'm happy to get more details if you want me to, to follow more.
In, in two thousand and twelve, there was one position of the county commissioners up for reelection. Two people run for that position, and they were both from the same party. So that meant half the people party. So that meant half the people in Lake County had no voice as who would represent him for the next four years.
Well, so let me put it this way. Uh, the other party could have gotten together and put up a candidate, and then, so they had a voice, it didn't exercise.
Okay, but they didn't do that.
Well, they didn't, right.
So that, that still deprives half of the, half of the county of representation for four years, and this carries out on up the stream all the way to there.
Yeah. Well, I do hear your, I do hear your point. And it is, it is, um, as, if when one party dominates an area, then often the primary becomes the equivalent of the general, uh, election. A lot of counties have gone to nonpartisan, uh, is it nonpartisan here?
We have thanks to this man.
Okay, well, there we go. Okay, so what, so the, the vision you had to promote nonpartisan primaries means anyone could have jumped into, and in innocence, it kind of, the party label is ideally stripped away. Now, in practice, that kind of doesn't necessarily happen. Uh, but that's, that's partly the answer. Let me tell you about the kind of, a little, let me expand on your question. Uh, when I was first around the senate, I was an intern for Senator Hatfield, as the mayor noted in your introduction. And the, uh, the senators largely could disagree, uh, without diminishing each other. Uh, they had fought in World War II together. They had been in the foxhole together. Uh, there was a bond. We're on the same side. Even if we disagree, we're on the same side. Uh, in addition, they lived in DC, they had a normal work week, they were there most of the evenings, they'd often return to their district one weekend a month. Uh, the families reinforced those relationships. Uh, so you had that. Then you also had three networks that created kind of a common conversation among American citizens. That is not the world we live in today. Uh, Congress is in session for Monday night through Thursday night. Uh, people work day and night for three days, jump back on the plane. I come back to Oregon, uh, every weekend. No point in staying in DC, because nobody else is there. And so you, you come back to your, your district, the families are back home. I took my family to DC when I was first elected, because that, families used to be part of what, the magic of what made Congress work. But after a year in which there were no other families there, I said, well, no, my son's starting high school, they come back and get their roots, uh, here in Oregon, at least they, at least they. Meanwhile, the networks are long past being the major source of, of news, social media, the, the web, the emails, uh, blogging, uh, you name it. Uh, and because a lot of it's anonymous, it's a much more vicious environment, uh, there is, um, tremendous number of pseudo-facts put out by all sides, by all parties reinforcing their points. It becomes harder to sort out, kind of filter out what's true and what isn't. Uh, that makes it more complicated. It's, all those things are designed to drive up the emotions. So now it starts to feel like warfare between the, the parties. I was very struck in the senate. What I saw is, um, I was working with a, a senator on a, on a project across the aisle, and then, uh, Bob Bennett lost his primary in Utah. He was attacked for working with Senator Wyden on healthcare. And then Dick Lupider lost his primary election in Indiana. He was attacked for working with John Kerry to control nuclear weapons. Uh, and suddenly, my partner on this project said, Jeff, I believe in the issue, but I can't be seen working with a Democrat. And that's the type of additional polarization that has, has happened, which is making, um, common sense problem-solving more difficult to achieve. And so, as you said, it goes up the channel. Uh, it is a big challenge we have in America, and it's further complicated by the question that was raised earlier over campaign finance, so.
It violates four sections of the Oregon Constitution. It violates Amendment One and Amendment Fourteen of the US Constitution. And so if it, if it violates those, how can they be legal?
And when you say "they," you mean the primary elections?
The primary.
You're saying the, the primary elections?
The primary elections.
Again, I'm not speaking as a lawyer, but I, in terms of the courts adjudicating the issue, they did not agree that it violated the Oregon Constitution. But you sound like somebody who can educate me further on issues you've delved into, so let's, uh, have Amy follow up, and, uh, I'll learn a little bit.
That's it. Just, just for one section of the Oregon, all the elections shall be free and equal. It, it can't be free and equal if you vote for it.
Well, we're going to turn to our, uh, I'll, I'll learn some more about how the courts have interpreted that, that phrase.
Thank you for.
We're going to close, you're welcome. We're going to close, I'm sorry, you can come up to me afterwards. Uh, but I'm going to close with the, uh, our student, Anna? Or is it Anna or Anna?
Anna.
Anna. Uh, Anna, uh, is at Lakeview High School, a senior, and where are you planning to go to school next year?
Oregon State University.
And, um, uh, so, Azakaya's going there as well? Is a fair share of your graduating class sent off to OSU?
Maybe.
Maybe, who knows? It's so early in the school year to figure this sort of thing out. I'm sure sometime soon, you'll be, you'll be like, oh, I've got to get my application in.
Oh, I've already applied.
Already, all right. Uh, well, um, would you like to close out with your comment or question?
Uh, what are your thoughts concerning how to keep college or make it more affordable in general? And what is Congress doing to keep the interest rates on federal student loans low?
So let me mention, uh, three approaches. Uh, one is, I've been teaming up with Elizabeth Warren, saying that our students should get the same low interest rate that the big banks get when they borrow from the federal government. Big difference between paying eight or ten percent and paying two percent. Huge difference. Uh, second of all, I put forward a bill called the Afford Act. And, uh, this, the roots of this started here in Oregon. The state legislature said, let's explore this idea called Pay It Forward, in which we have a revolving fund that pays the public school tuition for our, our high school students. And then they pledge to donate a share of their salary over the next ten or twenty years back to that fund, to pay it for the next generation. Uh, that Pay It Forward concept, uh, I explored thoroughly. We spent, uh, a year just immersed in meeting with, uh, groups. And in the end, it just, it's too complicated. Uh, and so, but there is a closely related idea, uh, called income-adjusted repayment on loans. And what it means is that when you borrow under a conventional loan, instead of having a payment that adds X amount per month for ten years, instead, it's either X amount per month, or after a basic survival income, ten percent of your discretionary income. And, uh, then, if you haven't paid it off, after twenty years, the rest of the loan's forgiven. And what that means is that a student who would sign up for that vision, uh, would know that they'd never be crushed by student debt, because it'd never be more than ten percent of your discretionary income. And this fear of being crushed by student debt is a really big factor, uh, here in America. Uh, I live in a blue-collar community, the same community I grew up in. I can tell you the conversation among a lot of parents is, I'm sorry, son and daughter, we don't think we'll be able to afford for you to go to college. That is a message that really hurts our nation. It hurts the prospects for that student. They're going to probably, uh, take a different course in high school if they hear that message, because what's the point? There's no future to pursue their, their, their dreams. Uh, the, not only is it bad for them, but because they don't fulfill their potential, society doesn't benefit from them. It's, it's bad for all of us. Now, I benefited from, uh, parents who said, we didn't go to college. I was the first in my family to go to college. My parents said, uh, we didn't go to college, we hope you do, and we're saving money so it be possible. And I just always believed it to be affordable. I never really knew anything about the financing, I just took it, okay, there's, there's a path. I just believed there was a path. We need for that belief to be in place for every student in America. And so the idea behind my bill is that if we have this as a premier option for the Stafford loan system, for being able to send a public university, then every student would know, could be told in seventh grade, junior high, there is an affordable path for you to get college education. And have that be real, not just a wish of, we know this makes a difference, because there is a foundation in which people adopt first graders, and they pledge to finance the college education for everybody in that first-grade class. And we have been able to study the results in schools of, here's a classroom that was adopted, here's a classroom that was not adopted. The kids who were adopted by, uh, wealthy donors, uh, they are told from that first grade, you can afford to go to college because of this program. They end up graduating at a much higher rate from high school, going to college at a much higher rate, graduating from college at a much higher rate, because of that knowledge that there is that, that path. So, uh, that's, uh, the Afford Act. Senator Wyden has an act called the Partnership Act. Uh, it is an effort to say states need to control rising tuition. And if a state undertakes to cap their tuition or to reduce it, by putting more funds into their university system, the federal government will match that. Uh, and so that's another strategy to try to take on, because there's, nothing has gone up faster in the American economy than the cost of college education. And yet, nothing has become more important over time. There are pathways outside of college. There's career technical education, there's, there's trades. But a lot of jobs, a lot of visions do require that additional education, more so than a generation ago. So we need to make it, uh, a, a, a pathway that people see that is available. I was struck by comparing the numbers in Germany to the United States. In Germany, the cost of tuition at, at a, at a public university is equal to four percent of median income. So one dollar out of every twenty-five, or four to five percent, one dollar out of every two, a family can pay the tuition out of the current year income, basically. Most families can. In America, it's not four to five percent of, of median income, it's forty-five percent of median income. Families cannot save one dollar out of every two in, in a year. College here, college is affordable in Germany, it's not affordable here. That's the bottom line, we've got to change that. That helpful?
Thank you.
That's a good question for us to, to close on. I want to thank very much the mayor for, uh, having us here in town and, and emceeing the, the gatherings. Appreciate all of you being engaged citizens, uh, and engaging in this kind of dialogue. Don't let this dialogue stop at this. I'm sure some of you send me letters, feel free to continue that. And through Amy, she can also get us on the, on the phone together, or pursue the issues you're working on. Uh, so thank you very much, it's an honor to serve you, Senator.